Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting in the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Mr. Robke.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on February 13th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, only six members are present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, a vote of three to three will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. That next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is February 7th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the given evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we'll open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say "I do." Thank you. Ms. Roberts, please call the first case of this evening.
Our first case is 2017 Z-64, 1109 Central Avenue. This is a request for a special use for-
A personal service establishment, reflexology services.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. We plan to open-
I need your name and address first.
Oh, okay. My name is Yajun Liu, and the address we apply is 1109 Central Avenue. That is the special use permit.
Okay. So tell us what you're gonna do.
We're going to open reflexology spa.
Mm-hmm. Can you give us, well, the question was asked when we first sat down before the meeting started. What is reflexology?
Okay. Reflexology, that is, the hand and your foot, there are certain points reflected to your organs, like liver or your heart. There are certain points, if you press, give some pressure, then that's will reflect to the organ, I mean, that's, how to say?
Yeah.
Related to the body. And that definitely helps you to release the stress.
Uh-huh.
And also, I mean, when you, okay, for example, if you stamp, sprayed some oil on your two foot, then you stamp two papers, there's some oil will have like heavier print. That means you put your body weight on that one a little more, so you definitely have more stress on that one. We, I mean, try to figure out which is the best way to help you to get your stress out and how we can help you to have the better life that you want.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, like, for example, if you want more energy, then, I mean, we have certain way to boost your energy.
Wow. Okay.
That's what we try to do.
Yeah, well, no, good explanation. Thank you. So you're opening, you want to open this business, how many employees are you gonna have there?
For right now, my sister already work in three spas that have probably about eight franchise and 20 between those. Then she helps them to manage it, and we try to figure out what's the new way we want to do. Because for right now, all the foot massage, I mean, reflexology, they are like old way. So we try to get some new stuff from China. They definitely have better, I mean, how to say, technologies, better management than what's currently on the market. So we currently have probably about 10 employees in the hand. We're going to open two actually stores. One is the 1109 Central and another one is the West Plaza, Lake and Skokie.
Yeah, so like Eaton's Plaza over there. Okay.
Oh, Eastern, okay, the crossway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we will see, I mean, what's going on, then we're probably going to interview more stuff in the future.
So the reason that we ask about the number of employees in the downtown area is because, you know, not every site can offer as much parking as needed, but I know that you wrote an email saying that you're gonna have-
Yeah.
Three spaces, is that right?
Yeah, we have three spaces behind the building, and we probably are going to have two or three cars, and we're going to capu the employee in the morning and the night.
And then there's also the public lot that is just a couple of buildings to the west behind the Memorial Park. Yeah, so there's a lot of parking right in that area.
Okay.
All right. Anything else you want to add for us? Or are there any other questions that we might have from the board?
I have a question.
What is the current use?
Currently is, used to be the doctor, what kind of eye doctor?
Ophthalmist?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's vacant now, isn't it? Yeah.
It's empty for a couple of years already, right?
Yeah, thank you.
So you were talking about 10 employees, but that would be for two locations?
10 employees going to be in two locations, yeah.
Okay. So you think all the employees would park behind?
No, they, I mean, most employee, they don't have car, so we need to capu them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you wouldn't need more than those three spaces for the employees?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right. Is there anything else you want to share with us before we consider this, take a vote? No?
For right now, I mean, I did not prepare much, but if you ask for more, I definitely can prepare more information that you need.
Well, I think, you know, without any questions from the board, I think we're okay right now. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against us? All right, seeing nobody rush up, I'm going to close the case, and I'm gonna ask the board, a member of the board to make a motion for me. Mr. Boyer, thank you. You can have a seat while we do this.
Thank you.
In regards to case number 2017Z64, I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a personal services establishment, reflexology services at 1109 Central Avenue. In accordance with the plan submitted, the use will run with the use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robke. Mr. Boyer, your motion?
I think this business will fit within the downtown area. I don't think there's gonna be any parking concerns. I think what we really are concerned about is with these type of businesses, if, how much parking is gonna be taken up by a large employee base or long-term meetings-
Like customer stays.
Customer stays, things like that. However, I think this type of business would allow additional shopping experiences or opportunities for other businesses other than a doctor's office. You really, you know, don't really feel like shopping after you go to a doctor's or an eye doctor if your eyes are dilated. You really don't wanna, you know, go look for some stuff, so I think this meets all the standards of review.
Thank you. Mr. Robke?
Well said.
All right, any other additional comments from anybody else on the board? No? Okay, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Robke.
Yes.
Mr. Coling.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chairman votes yes as well, seeing how this meets all the standards of review. Can you come up, I'm gonna have you sign one of these letters, just acknowledging-
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare a report and recommendation, yeah, report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for case number Z-2017Z64.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you. All right, when you're ready.
Our next case is 2018 Z-2, 3730 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a 7.11-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation to permit the retention of an air conditioner and a three-foot side yard setback variation and a three-foot separation variation to permit the retention of a grill island and pergola.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mina Baruda, 3730 Lake Avenue.
I'm Steve Baruda.
So we've lived at this home for over six years. It's the first home that we've purchased. Prior to this, we were renting in the city. Before moving in, we understand the home had been vacant for quite some time, which was evident by looking at the backyard. It was a ton of weeds, bushes overgrown, the existing patio was caving in at places which was unsafe. We purchased it as an as-is property. There was an ugly chain-linked fence on the back, and so we were finally happy to find a home we could afford in a great community such as Willmet, and so we knew we needed to save money to at least help try to improve the backyard because we are outdoor people. We love to be outside and try to enjoy it as much as we can living in Illinois. And so I know Lisa had mentioned we're requesting for a variance to allow to retain our current AC unit, which has been located on the west side of our home for the past five years. About five years ago, we were replacing the existing patio pavers and our air conditioner broke out, and so I remember it was a hot day. I was eight months pregnant with my daughter, and so I called the air conditioning and heating company to come out to see what was wrong. He was away traveling, and they said they couldn't repair the existing AC because it was old and that we needed a new one. At that time, they had suggested putting it on the west side of the home, and I had agreed, not realizing that there was a 10-foot side yard variance that was, or requirement that was needed. The AC is extremely quiet. It's located below our kitchen window, and so we spend a lot of time in the kitchen, and we don't hear it. We also live on Lake Avenue, which is a very, very busy street, and there's a lot of, you know, noise and congestion that would drown out any potential noise that the AC would make. And to be honest, the traffic on Lake Avenue is a lot louder than the AC unit itself. We have a six-foot fence, pass up, along the property line that would also kind of deflect any noise that the AC unit could potentially make. But again, it is extremely quiet. If anything were, in the future, the mechanical condenser start to make noise, obviously we would address it because we would hear it ourselves and would want to make the best of it. Our neighbor to the west has known that it's been in that current location for the last five years and has never complained or brought anything up to us about that. We're also requesting that the board grant us the three-foot side yard setback variation and three-foot separation to allow us to retain our current grill island. That's also been in place for five years and allow us to continue installing a pergola over the grill island as shown in the picture. The grill island was done at the same time as the paver patio. I know that inspector had come out on two different occasions to our home, and the grill never came up as an issue as far as not meeting any of the requirements. And both of our neighbors at East and West have known that that has also been in place for over five years. And then in regards to the pergola over the grill, so this past summer, we were replacing a rotting pergola that we had had over the sliding glass doors, you could see in the picture, and thought to add one over the grill, and we did not get a permit. To be honest, we didn't think we needed one, and that was our mistake to not do our due diligence in determining whether or not a pergola was needed for over the grill as well, as you can see in the picture. We're asking the board to approve the variation request for both the AC and grill because if we do have to move them, it will be a significant financial hardship for us. We did get a proposal of what the cost could be, and the estimated work is $8,950 based on preliminary information with a maximum total cost not to exceed $12,500 to break down the grill island and move it the three feet and try to relocate the AC as well. There are four similar cases that have been granted by the board that I'd like you to take into consideration before making your decision on our, huh? We have them. I know you have copies too. I mean, the one, I know every case is different and unique. However, these are all cases where the board had granted the retention of an existing AC or structure, specifically looking at the first case at 1334 Willmet Avenue. The owner placed two AC units in the front yard without realizing that there was a 30-foot front yard setback requirement, and the board had granted a variation of 23.71 feet to retain those two units based on a financial hardship as well. So based on this information, we're hoping that the board will allow us to retain both the AC and the grill in their current locations where they have been for the past five years.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Your will be settled.
So I'm looking at the back of your house. So just, can you describe a little bit, back of the house? So describe what's inside those two windows. Looks like there's two sliders, and in between, there's two double hungs. So what is on the interior and what's below?
So the double hungs are the dining room?
All right. I need you to, I'm sorry, you need to stand at the podium?
The two double hung are the dining room.
All right.
The slider to your right is the kitchen.
Okay.
Slider to the left is where-
All right, and then below is a basement?
Below is a basement.
All right. And then where's the mechanical room?
It's exactly where the AC unit is to the west side of the house, under the kitchen. So it's in the kitchen, so if the, you have the slider, you have the kitchen, there's a laundry room. So the mechanical is under the laundry room, basically right where the AC unit is.
Where was the AC unit?
The AC unit was in the back underneath the double hung window.
So right in the middle. So right in the middle, yeah.
And where was the units in the basement? Were they always where they are now or were they moved?
Yes.
Okay.
So the line set, so the, right now, the mechanical is in the, your electrical panel is over on the side.
West side of the house, correct.
Near the laundry room where the AC now is.
Correct.
So your line set went all the way through the basement, all the way to the mechanical room? Is that?
The original?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
The original, yes, it did.
Okay.
Believe so.
And then your dining room is in the middle of that, where those two double hungs are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the original AC was like 25 years old, so it was an original freon, I mean, it was probably this high.
Sure, right.
The new AC was, when we purchased it, had the highest sear level, and all the piping had to be redone anyway because it's like the R410, it requires different stuff than the freon.
Yeah, you put a new coil on your heating unit too.
Yes.
Yep.
I have a, go ahead. Okay. I'm just not sure, some of these drawings, it's in the packet, it's 1.4. Do you have the packet with you? It's one of the, second to the-
Which, the last-
Oh, actually, no, this is in, I'm sorry, this is in one of the emails.
1.4 in the email, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at this sheet here that shows, you know, the, I just want to get a chronology of what happened. The existing patio was being replaced, but then in this email, there's the shaded portion. Is that, was that permitted as well? Lisa, maybe you know?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, that was, that was done at the same time. We got the permit for that.
Yeah.
So the platte survey that has the existing patio was when we bought it from the bank.
Yeah.
And so we changed the lookout, the layout of that as part of that permit for the patio.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, but I guess the permit was for the other shade.
Yeah. The permit was for, it says replace existing, and anything that was submitted for the permit didn't have this addition on it.
I mean, I don't know. I, that's where, they came out and saw the inspection, and I got the permit during that time, and so I'm not sure. The square footage we know is the same.
Square footage is the same.
The shape's different, so I don't know.
So the square footage, you're saying is the same, so it goes back 17 and a half feet?
The right side doesn't go out as far as it-
So if you look at that original drawing that you were looking at, so the original in the platte survey, so if you look at the platte survey-
Yeah.
On the right-hand side, which would be the left-hand side if you're facing the back of the property-
Sure.
It came way out, and there was actually a tree in the middle, which doesn't show on the platte survey either.
So the platte survey wasn't accurate?
It is not accurate.
I mean, it was, yeah, bank on the property.
We bought the house from the bank as owned, but it came way out on the left-hand side, and it went way in on the right. So what we did is we shrunk-
Could you put these two pages, could you pull out the side thing there and show them on the, pull it out?
Pull it out a little farther.
There's a camera up above.
And use these two pages- These two pages to discuss what you're discussing. This one, this is the survey and this is the-
Okay, so here I can see, so this was the original platte survey that we got when we purchased the home from the bank. This was the original, it was, there were red 12-by-12 concrete blocks. There was actually a tree here in the middle, which isn't shown on here, and there were two trees there. So when we reeded the patio, we actually shrunk this back.
Yep.
Came in here and then came back out this way. So the square footage actually didn't change, but the shape did change. And that's what you guys see here is the shape that changed. The original, it came out, it came in here, and it was like this.
You're saying there was, with the permit, the drawing's not there?
Right. There's no drawing, just, the permit just says replace existing, and it has your survey. There's no drawing of what you were gonna do.
And it's fairly, you know, exact-
Actually, I take that back. There, there's a little bump out where you were supposed to put the grill, it looks like. Is that accurate of a statement? If you look at this page?
This one here?
No. Go, you're gonna have to go back, let's see what direction you're gonna go in that packet.
I'd say that bump out was just clearance to walk.
No. There you go, that one. See that bump out?
Yes, in this drawing, you can see it's more, that's what it looks like now.
All right. So now, they didn't follow that plan because your grill island, which I'm assuming is that bump out on the, that you drew in, is actually bumped out facing the other way and closer to the property line because your grill is now equal with the walk, the sidewalk down the side, down the house.
Grill, the grill is here, yeah?
Yeah.
The patio still follows this shape.
All right, so the grill was, the grill island was in addition to what you guys applied for, yeah?
Grill island, it was all done at the same time, so what happened?
That's not what I asked. I asked, is the grill island in addition to what you applied for?
I guess I assumed I was applying for it all, but I didn't know, I don't know.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
... came up, they had said we needed to get a permit for replacing, and so they saw the layout, and then they said to get the permit, we applied for the permit. I don't, I assumed we were doing it all, because they saw it. I thought it sounded like they got the grill island, so I don't know.
What's your question?
Well, it's for Lisa, and then I guess some of my thoughts and question, follow-up questions for discussion, but, so, the, it's conforming as it exists in lot coverage and impervious surface?
It was allowed to be replaced as existing because we consider that maintenance, and we don't check to see if it's over on coverage.
So I can answer that because I filled out the workbook for the pergola permits, so it is, it is conforming both for lot coverage, the pergola's conforming for the square footage, everything's conforming as is.
Well, not for the, not for the pergola, but for, for the-
Impervious.
The impervious surface.
Impervious surface.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you saying we, we don't know?
There is no calculation.
There's no calculation.
The rear yard, for zoning purposes, is the last 30 feet. It's really hard to read the plat, but my guess would be what's on the plat would probably be conforming for the rear yard.
Just eyeballing, but we're, but then, but also, we're not sure if what is existing is conforming or not.
Right. If this doesn't reflect, if this isn't accurate, then I'm not sure exactly what is out there, and we haven't run numbers on that.
Okay, so the answer is it could be conforming, we're just, at this point, we're not sure. Okay.
That's right.
Beyond, I have a question, another question for Lisa. Beyond the pergola near the grill, are they able, you're able to have a grill that close to the lot line?
No, it needs to meet the minimum side yard setback, which would be six feet.
If it would if it was a freestanding grill?
Like a portable grill?
Yeah.
We don't regulate that because, of course, it's portable.
Okay. But it would have to be outside of the side yard setback?
Right, right.
So basically, if you take that grill off, you have the pavers, and you can move a grill on wheels, there's no issue?
Correct.
Okay.
How did we get here, just out of curiosity? Why are we here?
Are we here?
Yeah.
It's our understanding our neighbor calls-
Can you, can you guys speak into the microphone for us?
I'm sorry. It's our understanding-
There's like three people that watch us on TV, and, you know, we get emails.
Oh, we're on TV? It's-
Wayne's Row?
Yeah.
It's our understanding, our neighbor is not pleased with the pergola, even though she knew the AC and grill were in place for five years and called the village on us. That's why we understand we're here. That's why we understand we're here.
But, in a lot of the work that you've done, you've pulled permits for. Right, some you.
Things we messed up on.
Yeah, some you haven't pulled permits, some you have. So, you're aware there is that process.
Well, we are now very well.
Yeah, but you were at the time that you were doing work, yeah. Lisa, if someone comes and says, I want to have, um, you know, a permanent structure for my grill, like this is, when they apply for the patio, isn't that supposed to be part of the application?
Uh, usually, it's written on the application, and there's drawings that show whatever that is. So, if it was, if it was written on the application, but there weren't plans, the reviewer would have asked, you know, is this part of the plan, or is it not?
But there was nothing in the application that shows it?
There's nothing in the electronic file that we have of that permit.
Okay. Now, I understand the inspector came out, and he looked at it, and he didn't say anything about it, but, um, in an application, it's supposed to be there, so that the village is aware of what's being built and what's, yeah.
Right, so, um, I don't remember the details of this permit, but, um, there is a note on the application, and as well as a note on the one inspection that we have, that, um, that the, that Mike Thompson Code Enforcement was involved. So, I, it's, I don't have any note that the grill island was observed, but, um, I'd have to follow up with the inspectors of Code Enforcement to see if there was any record of it, because it doesn't show up here.
Is the, the grill island, does it have a gas line that runs to it and plumbing to it?
No plumbing.
But the gas line is under it, okay.
Does the paving, absent the grill, if it, it's three feet from the property line, is a paved patio? Needs to be six feet from the property line?
No, a patio could be three feet.
Is there a minimum of three feet, or do they?
Minimum of three feet.
Three feet?
Yeah.
So, they're in compliance with the patio?
Yes, if the grill island wasn't there, you could have a patio.
Got it. And wheel your grill there? Yes, yeah.
Just can't leave it.
So.
But would you be able to, uh, you wouldn't be able to build that structure, the pergola, that close? How close could you build that?
That's like an accessory structure, it would have to meet the six-foot side yard setback.
If I, if I had a, an umbrella on a table, on, on kind of, on that grill, that I could open and close, that would be, okay?
But the grill structures?
If it's in the, if the.
No, you have a portable grill.
If it's a portable grill with a portable umbrella, then you could have that.
But if it's a fixed grill with a portable umbrella?
Then you're in that three foot, you're.
Yeah, I don't think we would worry about the umbrella, because the umbrella would be portable.
Yeah.
So, is this pergola, is this finished?
No.
No, it says it's in the picture.
They're gonna have slats over the top or something like that?
Yes, it'll match, it'll match the one to the, the left thing of it, yeah.
The door ones.
Right, okay.
So, instead of a pergola?
It's not, yeah.
An, a portable umbrella would be okay?
Sure.
So, I, I have a question regarding this photo that you sent, when did you guys take this photo?
Just the other day.
Before the snow?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, this whole side, uh, is all mulch?
Yeah.
Except out by where the gate, and you've got your garage, and your garbage cans, behind the garage, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, and that, that was done at Ms. Pearlman's request, the red patio bricks you're talking about?
Yeah.
But up until that point, yeah, it's all mulch.
And how, so that only goes, like, four, six feet, or eight feet, or something like that, from the patio? Or how far along the, behind the garage, does that run?
The mulch?
No, the pavers.
No, the pavers are only, I don't know, six feet before, five or six feet behind the fence, just the trash cans. All right, so literally, it's big enough for the two trash cans to sit?
Yeah. I opened the gate.
Oh, yeah, so good.
But, but it was covered in snow, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, sorry, no.
If the pavers went all the way down the whole side of the house, or not?
With the trash cans.
Yeah.
Because when I came down through, I assume you're the neighbor, through the neighbor's yard to look at your backyard, it looked like, right off the corner, there were red pavers right on the corner of the house too, but maybe that's just the mulch I saw through the snow, yeah.
Yeah, no.
No, just the front.
Yeah, because as I'm looking at this, there's, it just goes mulch, it looks like it goes almost all the way back to it.
Yeah, there's mulch all the way to the grill.
All right. So, when you replaced the air conditioning unit, and you moved it from the back of your house to the side? Was there a permit required? Can you just cover that?
Again, North Star Air and Heating did it, and they said we could move it, and I didn't realize that there even was a setback, and I, that was it. I didn't think of it after that, so I don't know, I assumed they potentially would get, I don't even know that there would need a permit, to be honest, because we had an AC already, so I didn't know what they did.
Yeah, we assumed, like, so when we had the fence, when we had the fence replaced, um, they told us specifically we needed a permit, so we pulled a permit. We had the AC replaced, he didn't say anything, and he said we'd move it aside, so we said, okay, fine.
Which fence replaced, which are you referring to?
The back.
The iron, the iron fence?
It was a chain link fence, and we put a nice aluminum fence.
I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, it's very ugly.
And we pulled a permit for that, I mean, the fence contractor told us we needed a permit, so we pulled a permit.
There's one straight contractor.
Right. We've learned that too now.
So, the fence behind the grill, is that your fence?
Yes.
Yes.
That fence could be six-foot stockade, right?
Yeah.
Well, it is running up to that point, right, because it's a six-foot fence that runs along the whole length of the house.
Runs along with the house, correct.
Yeah.
It stops.
And then it stops.
So, I wish you could actually see where the yard is.
Let's see, did I get on back here? I got my question, who did the work, AC pergola construction? All right, I've got all my questions, anybody else have any other questions?
Who was the contractor that was building the pergola? Or was that you building it, or?
No, his name was Weisslaw, we pulled a permit afterward.
He had a, then he got, he was a.
He got a business license, realment and everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's just.
And he didn't say get a permit or anything?
No, he lives in Wisconsin.
He's pulling, like, I mean, he's, I don't know, I mean, he's just much, yeah.
Another one. Who did the pavers? Was this company out of Highland Park? I noticed on somewhere, there was a paver company out of Highland Park, right?
National Brick and Paver.
And they did the grill also?
Yeah.
They did the grill, and then we also got to pull the permit for the front, so they did the front at a later date, the front walk, and the front porch, covered porch.
Okay.
We pulled a permit for that at a later date.
All right, any other questions? No? Okay, all right, gonna ask, you guys have a seat, if there's anybody else who'd like to speak either for or against this case? Please come on up. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Pearlman, I live at thirty-seven Thirty-Six Lake, I'm directly west of the Barudas. I have compiled a compendium of information and research on this project, as you see. Because I think it's important to support my objections in approving the variation request. Rather than responding to, well, let me back up just a little bit. I was on vacation for over a month, and returned back to Chicago on the twenty-seventh of December. When I received my held mail on the twenty-eighth, I got your notice. So, I quickly responded, because the original meeting for this was scheduled for, I believe, January third, if I'm not mistaken. This was subsequently delayed or rescheduled for tonight. So, my first letter, uh, was a he said, she said letter, sort of like the Barudas letter. And I had not at all seen any of the information concerning this application, I had not seen the application itself, but I wanted to get something into the board. So, subsequently, I, um, thought it would be a good idea to review, once I found out everything was going to be rescheduled. I came down to Village Hall, I thoroughly researched every single eighteen of the cases that were referred to for this particular case. And I also went through every drawing that was submitted for every permit, pulled the permit list, of which there may have been five or six over a period of five or six years.
For this subject property?
For this subject property, yes. And in going through the information, uh, things were just looking a little strange to me, so, um, I want to also back up, because, uh, there have been two, um, setback violation, build-outs done without permits on the property that have been there for five years. I have lived for sixty years in Chicago, I have a second home in Chicago, I had for years, lived in the Gold Coast, I had, I worked in the, in the city. I was out in this area one day and saw this for sale by owner sign, for this great little house right on the Willmet Golf Club, it said Golf Club on the sign, I thought, this looks very, very interesting. This is at the height of the building boom in two thousand and six. I ended up buying this house, never moved in, lived in the city, and continued with my business and so on. I love Willmet, I just fell in love with it, I love taking advantage of the golf club. I really loved buying a lawnmower, and for the first time in my life, having an opportunity to play in the grass and to cut the grass. I have wonderful neighbors, the Barudas are fabulous, lovely, lovely people. I've really enjoyed their friendship, I've enjoyed being their neighbor. So, I wa, I didn't spend much time in Willmet, I travel extensively, owned the house, never lived there, never rented it out to anyone, but I always came out on the weekends. In the winter, I would come out to check the property, to make sure nothing was wrong from the ice and snow, but in the summer, it was basically a weekend deal, where I'd come out, get some exercise, cut the grass, and enjoy the club. Or the golf course, rather. So, um, a lot of these things that were going on next door, I was somewhat unaware of. Although, when it would become winter, and the leaves would go away from the tulbishes, I could see what was going on. I, like many Willmet, I'm sure many Willmet residents, really have a hesitation in confronting a neighbor on an obvious problem. I didn't say anything, once I did find out what was going on over there, there were, well, sticking to this particular, um, request, there are three things going on. The air conditioner, which is violating the setback, setback variation, or I should say, uh.
I was, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you, can you, uh, describe to us how, how this affects you? I'm most interested in that, I mean, how, how this is violating the zoning codes, I think, I think we are aware.
In my original letter, I got a little off track in citing all kinds of things going on, on the property, without permits. And I did that only to demonstrate, not to tattletale, but to demonstrate, there's a history of, of permit violations on this property over and over and over again. But to get back to what's going on tonight, I noticed the air conditioning problem, I noticed the build-out of the grill island. I then was looking out my window, you have to understand too, I should tell you a little bit about my background, my background. I'm a former member of the International Interior Design Association, professional member for many, many years. I'm a design professional that's worked with engineers, architects, cities, municipalities, towns, villages, for a fifty-year period. Consumers, flippers, developers, all kinds of people. So, now I'm looking out my window, just this past August, six years after former violations, and I see a pergola, a pergola, rather, in the process of being built. Regardless of what dialogue went on with my neighbor about, did you get a permit, do you have a permit, whatever, this did not look right to me, based on my background in design. I called the city, I said, was a permit pulled for this property? Ted Blumenthal said, uh, I'll be there in five minutes, oh my God, scared me to death, because, you know, trying to, just trying to find out what was going on, now all of a sudden, he's coming out in his car and checking the property. It affects me, because we have a situation with a, um, variation request without proper documentation for the pergola, permit was never pulled, it was pulled after Ted came out and saw what was going on. There was never a permit for any of the work. There was a permit for flat work, but it did not include new flat work that the pergola was set on, or that these other things are, you know, the other things are set on. So, this is a continuing concern for me, there's no document, documentation, there are no permits pulled. And as a resident of Willmet, I'd like to know, why should a resident have items grandfathered in as a result of not following the rules and regulations of the Willmet zoning card, uh, code? Uh, I think it's very unfortunate, and I was very concerned about that happening to me. There's a circumventing of the, of the, um, zoning process here, of the permit process, I should say. And it's precluded the zoning board, and now the Zoning Board of Appeals, to thoroughly review a case in advance before something is built, to make certain evaluations.
We're here, and it's built.
Yeah.
So, can we deal with the fact that it's here?
We want to know how, how is this negatively impacting you? Or is it not negatively impacting you? Is the, is the air conditioner a hindrance to you? Is the pergola a hindrance to you?
It is not a hindrance to me. It is, um, a potential noise problem on the side of me. Which is why I came, because, you know, next time I would come in, if it's five years from now, I would hear, it's been there for ten years.
Here, let's, it's been there for five years, so has it, has it been an issue for you during the past five years?
No.
Okay. Has the grill been an issue visually for you over the last five years?
No.
And what about the pergola, which has just started to be erected, has that created an issue for you?
Uh, well, it's only partially built, so I have no idea, based on the drawings, how it's gonna turn out.
Only slats going the other way yet, so the height is there.
The height is, yeah.
So, does that create an issue?
It's not creating an issue.
All right, thank you. So, I, I think the reason we're, we're asking if they're creating an issue for you, and in your review of the cases that maybe we've granted or denied in the past, particularly regarding air conditioning units, when they're in the side yard setback like this, um, if it's a more efficient place to place the air conditioner unit without having a negative impact on the affected neighbor, then in general, we've granted the request. And in the cases where people have done it, and they've had to come back and ask for permission, we've asked ourselves, all right, if they would have come to us and asked us for a permit, would we have granted it like this?
Yes.
And in some cases, some board members have said no, and others have said, yeah, we would have done it. And whether it went positive or negative, uh, the village board got to read it and review it, and they also could have made objection, or, um, and I think in almost every single case, they've approved it. So, in looking at this case, uh, one of the first questions I have about the air conditioning unit is, all right, if they would have come to us and said, hey, we need to replace our air conditioning unit, and although this was done at a separate time, we're gonna do another, we're gonna redo our patio, it's more efficient for us to move the air conditioning unit to the side, we need a variance, you would have been notified, you could have come and said, yay, nay, I'm, I'm concerned about this. If, if, uh, I'm trying to remember, we just had a case, was it down by the lake, where we asked for them to put some additional noise baffling? If it, if it looked like it could be a concern, because the houses are really close together, and it could, can, you know, affect you by noise, or the neighbor by noise, we've asked for additional sound attenuating, sound baffling, to be put up.
Oh, that was the case at one thousand Michigan Avenue.
Okay, so, yeah, within the last few meetings, we had something like that. And, and they agreed to do it. So, you know, is this, this is the way I was looking at that part. My concern was, similar to yours about the patio, well, look, I mean, they, we really don't know what they, did they follow what their application was? Didn't they? You know, my bigger concern is about the contractor who was hired and just did it, you know, and said, hey, I don't care about the village, I'm just gonna do it. But that's something that Lisa and I have discussed before the meeting. Coming back in full circle, do you object to the existing air conditioning unit, the existing, um, uh, island for the grill? Either of those, do you object to those?
I object to it only in the sense that it was not, that I was never given an opportunity to appear before you and express an objection.
Would you have objected if they, if they proposed it like it's built out?
I would have brought up my concerns possibly, oh, I'm sure I would have brought up concerns about the possibility of, um, noise.
Okay. The pergola, if they would have, um, done the proper permitting, um, and then had to. The pergola, if they would have done the proper permitting and then had to ask permission to put the pergola up in its existing condition, which now you have the opportunity to object to that because it has stopped the work, is this something that you think is going to negatively impact you? Is it going to affect the lighter air to your yard? Is it going to affect your views? Is it going to affect you in a negative way at all?
No, it won't. And I stated that it would not in my, in the list of six standards for variation.
Which I read. And I must compliment you on the extent of work that you did to present information to us. It was quite time-consuming, I have to imagine, so.
I have a background in it.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to finish with?
I just wanted to add one more thing. With reference to the 1334 Willmet Avenue property that was cited tonight as an example, I wanted to mention that there was neighbor support on that. It was a very, very unusual site plan, if you were to look at that and if you might remember. There was no objection whatsoever, and that particular case was, as the Baruda said, for a front yard, not a three-foot side yard.
Correct.
And in addition to that, it was a replacement where a former air conditioner was cited.
Cited, yeah.
A completely different situation.
And if I can bring up a point that you made in your letter to us that I think people often misconstrue, hardship. Hardship is not about how much money something costs. Hardship's about the uniqueness of the property and the application, or the application of the rules to that particular property. So in that Willmet Avenue case, the way that the lot was shaped and where the building was sited on the lot made it almost the only place that you could place those air conditioning units. So in a way, we had to grant it because it was the place to put them. So in this case, we don't really have a hardship for anything, but going back to how we look at air conditioning units and, in this case, the grill island, we may, if the people had come, applicant had come through the proper channels, we would ask certain questions. I'm not sure that I would have agreed to allow the grill island to go where it is right now, but is it really negatively impacting? And I think we've all come to an agreement that it's not really a negative impact right now on your property.
Can I ask a question for Lisa? What is a decibel level required at the property line for an air conditioning unit?
There is no limit for a residential air conditioner.
There's none?
There is none.
So we just have a distance requirement? What would, do we have any ideas for what would be an acceptable decibel level?
I don't really, I'm sorry.
Something like 70 or something?
That's for generators, so maybe around that, maybe less, yeah.
The generators make noise, air conditioners make noise.
They do.
The thing about air conditioner noise is, you're running your air conditioner, your windows are closed.
No, no, I got it. My point is, these current highly energy-efficient condensing units are fairly, are not very noisy.
Yeah, they're a little bit quieter than the older style.
And I suspect that at the property line, and I'm not saying that they should have put it where they have, because it should really be in a different location, but I suspect that at the property line, a current air conditioning unit would not exceed 70 decibels. But we don't know. Which is the acceptable one for generators, right?
Right.
But a generator is an emergency generator, not something that's running all summer. I don't think 70 decibels is the appropriate standard, but I don't think it's, I don't think these put out anywhere near.
No.
Okay. I want to make sure I've given you the opportunity to add everything that you'd like to add to comments.
Oh, yes, you absolutely have, and my last question would be, what would the incentive to this owner or any owner or any resident in Willmet be to not conform to code and to continue building without permits?
They have to be on TV.
Just a question.
Yeah, they want to be on TV. I mean, you know, that's why I signed up for this. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask this, does the board have any more questions for the applicant from what was brought up by the neighbor?
I have a question.
All right. Could you please, I was, in general, what we do, the applicant has an opportunity to respond to the neighbor's questions or comments, but we address most of them, so I wanted to make sure. So go ahead.
I guess the term has been brought up and hardship has been mentioned relative to the site. If we take the Wayback Machine and go back and disregard the fact that any of these improvements exist at this point in time, and you're coming to us asking for these and they haven't happened yet, what's the hardship?
Well, I mean, the hardship is a couple of things. One is, the old unit was right underneath our dining room window, right? So we'd asked to move that. The patio is nice, we spend a lot of time out there, it's right on the golf course, it's beautiful, we eat dinner out there pretty often, right? So we wouldn't want the air conditioner right in the patio.
And it's more efficient.
And it's much more efficient, obviously, on the side.
So that, the sliding door, as I look at the back of your house from the golf course, the sliding door to the right is the kitchen?
By the grill, yeah.
Right, I was going to say, so to have the grill at the far end of the patio, it's a lot more convenient to have the grill off.
Right, in and out.
Yeah. Is that a hardship? No, it's not a hardship.
He's from Florida, no.
Yes, whenever I flip flops from Florida to grill my steaks in the snow, it's quick in and out.
I grill in the winter, too. I put on shoes, though. I'm barefoot in the summer, but, yeah. TMI, I know. So, you know, hardship, yeah, convenience.
I don't think we've ever quite used convenience as a hardship.
Right. All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you plan on doing any more work on the house?
No.
Ever?
Are you sure?
Howdy, just calling, contacting you, done.
Yeah, are you sure? Okay. Are we set? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much as well for coming. Can I have a board member, I'm going to close the case, I want a board member to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
In regards to case number 2018Z02, for the purposes of discussion, I move to recommend granting a request for a 7.1, 7.11-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation permit the retention of an air conditioner and a three-foot side yard setback variation and a three-foot separation variation to permit the retention of a grill island and pergola at 3730 Lake Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Mr. Boyer, your motion.
So, look at these, I look at this case a lot of different ways. First, looking at the physical nature of the, where the house is set, the lot size, 60 by 150, it's a large lot. The house doesn't have any siding issues, there's no side drive, there's no rear alley. It's, it's, there's, everything is conforming, everything is normal. So we don't have any practical difficulty for a lot of, a lot of the requests. When I look at the two different items, the AC, and take the AC separately from the grill and the pergola, the AC I can get comfortable with just because of the new efficiency of the AC, where the original location of the air conditioning unit wasn't ideal. It has been there for six years and there hasn't been any complaints. So if the applicant came to us originally five years ago, I would be amenable to granting the request. Looking at the grill, it puts us in a tough situation seeing this after the fact, because if they were coming with a proposal to put in a grill island and pergola, one of the, one of the things that we do as a board is look at reducing the variance request. And so in our discussion, we would have said, "Hey, applicant, what do you think about moving the grill three feet in or moving a little bit farther, and then you don't have to have a variance request?" That would be the discussion if they came to us originally. So those are my thoughts, and I'll, I'm on the fence on this one. I'll, want to hear what everybody else has to say.
Mr. Coling.
So, you know, I agree with Mr. Boyer on the air conditioner. I think we, I mean, many of the air conditioners in Willmet are between homes like this. I think this is the type of thing, even five years back, I would have said, "I don't have an issue with it." And so since there has really been no noise complaint about it, it's just the fact that it was put in without a permit, I can support having the air conditioner where it is and not making them move it back. On the grill, I mean, clearly, the application was only for the patio, it didn't have any, didn't mention a grill being built, that wasn't part of that permitting process. This isn't the first time we've had a resident come in and had a permit pulled and the contractor did something different and they weren't aware they needed it for more. I agree with Mr. Boyer. I think probably if you came today and said, "We want to build this," we would ask you to move it probably closer, you know, if not totally within the setback, at least closer than it is. Since it's been there for five years, it's fairly expensive to move it. If it wasn't there, you could put a grill of the same size on wheels and it wouldn't be a problem, and there's no complaint from the neighbor about it being there. I don't have an issue with it, and I don't think they should have to remove it. As far as the pergola goes, it's mostly air. I mean, the two posts, if that created an issue for the neighbor, I think I would say you should move it to be conforming. However, I didn't hear that. It matches everything else. From an aesthetic point of view, it'll look fine, so I don't have an issue granting it. I don't see what a hardship is, and I can go the other way on it if everybody thinks it's a bad idea, but that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. I would, they, for whatever reason, they did things that violate or that contravene the zoning code. Whether the contractor is at fault or whoever, it was done. I think putting the air conditioner three feet from the property line, the reason we have 10 feet is for a reason. If we don't have 10 feet, we don't think 10 feet is all right, we should change it, but three feet is a requirement. I mean, 10 feet is a requirement. We have made exceptions, a number of them, for various circumstances. I recall the Butler School, which faced the school and the garbage dump, and others. With respect to the grill island, again, that was done. It shouldn't have been done, it was done. I don't think we should make them fix it, put it in compliance. That doesn't make sense. But I think, I think it should stay as it is, but I would recommend that the board consider some sort of sanction, the Board of Trustees, when they review this, because I don't think we can simply let these things go just because they're in place and they have not been permitted.
Yeah, easier to ask forgiveness than permission.
Right. So that's, I don't think it should be removed, I don't think it should be changed, but I think there should be some sort of sanction, and the board can impose that if they choose to.
Okay. Mr. Robkey?
Yes. I think I'm in a minority on the air conditioner. If the air conditioner is so quiet and not a problem, then it wouldn't have to be relocated from the middle of the porch. Most of the time, the cases where we approve of them in the side yard setback, it's the replacement of a unit, and that's where it's been for a long time, and, you know, sort of the variance is being triggered because of a maintenance issue. And we look upon that differently in the same way that we approve fence variations typically when it's a replacement or a maintenance issue on a fence. I'm also, you know, I don't think we would have approved the grill or the pergola as a variance had that come to us at the time. So the bad news is, I'm not, I can't support this. The good news for you, and sort of, I just don't think it's within our jurisdiction to say. We have an obligation, some criteria laid out that define different types of hardship, and no negative consequences. There is no hardship here. Point of frustration for me sometimes on this board is that you have another step with the Village of Trustees, and when you go to them, I have no doubt that they will approve this regardless of the steps that we take here, but as much as I appreciate, I think you've done things in good faith, I understand it. I'm not looking to penalize you, I just don't think it's within our jurisdiction, the criteria are laid out, required to find in a hardship, and there's no hardship.
Mr. Sermon, any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Robkey, especially with the air conditioner. You know, with even new homes, we require them to be in the back of the house. Now, if they didn't want it near the grill, if that's where the table was, they could have put it.
We didn't it on the Michigan Avenue at home.
That was, but the...
There was a hardship.
The...
Well, the hardship was is they didn't want to put it in the backyard.
That was a generator, though, right?
No.
There was an air conditioner and a generator. They're on two different Michigan Avenue properties, yeah. So, I guess, but a lot of times, we do relocate them to the side, so I don't have as much of an issue with the air conditioner. The grill, I agree with Mr. Coling. I mean, you could, and I talked to Lisa about this, you can put on wheels and you could move a grill that close, so here you've got a couple of little side tables, which if you buy a big grill, you can almost flip those up anyway, so I don't have a problem with that. I do have a difficulty with the pergola. You know, I don't know how many we're getting now, but it seems like a lot of these cases that are coming have to do with people that build stuff and then, you know, ask for forgiveness afterwards, and, you know, if somebody did that to the property next door, it could block my view, you know, it could be, and, you know, how's it going to be maintained over the years? You know, it's, you know, we have that requirement so that it's not in eye shot of the neighbor. So I guess, you know, I don't know if there should be sanctions, but I, you know, I think one way would be to just eliminate the pergola there and just cut it off at the base and allow forgiveness for the rest, but I think it's going to be an issue in the future if we start approving accessory structures that were not permitted.
One comment I'd like to add is, everybody seems to be focusing off, if it was a movable grill that you could put it there.
Yeah.
If it was a movable grill, you could also remove it from that area. Sure, with a movable grill, there's no requirement because it's not fixed there, and if it is a problem or nuisance to the neighbor, it can be relocated. But I don't think that's specifically the issue. Again, the issue for me is, there's no hardship, but I do believe at the next step, based upon my experience with this board, that...
I mean, if you...
...to get through this.
Yeah. I don't know who's advising them, but if you're getting a permit to do flat work on a patio, you would think that you'd need to have a permit to build something that's above the ground.
Yep. So, you know, my, I expressed some of my thoughts on this during the presentation, and I think that if they would have come to us as one project, which it was not, it was an air conditioner went bad, and then subsequent to that was a replacement of the patio, but if they would have come to us as if this was one project... if they would have come to us as if this was one project, yeah, I think we would have
The full scope.
Yeah, we would have seen that, okay, you know, placing the air conditioner on the side, getting it closer to the utility room and everything, shortening the run for that, okay, that makes sense, get it out of the way for the backyard, you know, I, I think I would be in favor of that personally, if they came and asked for this as a variance, but I wouldn't be in favor of, you know, something, of a permanent structure being in that sideyard setback. We would have asked them to relocate it, we would not have approved it, because they would have been coming and asking permission. It's done now, and I think the way that I'm looking at the grill is, I can't approve it, and I will let the Village Board decide what they should do with it. I agree with Mr. Schneider that there's too much of it, there's too much of asking for forgiveness, and that there should be something.
For just, the only thing is, I know you mentioned builders and contractors, and it may not be, it may or may not be a homeowner issue, and it may or may not be a contractor issue, and then, I think we've always looked at, the homeowner is the one that has been asking for forgiveness, and truly have an understanding, but you brought that up with the contractors, and I, I think they actually might hold more burden.
So, here's, I asked Lisa, and she can reiterate this, it's the homeowner's responsibility when they apply for a permit, whether the contractor does it for them or not, it's the homeowner's responsibility, so the burden falls to the homeowner. My question to Lisa was, do we have like a list in the village of contractors that often are caught, you know, in hindsight, not following code, you know, building something without permits, and then coming in, and there's not an official list of that?
Really? I would think there, there should be, right? I mean, the scofflaw list of contractors...
The code enforcement officers and the building inspectors certainly have experience in the field and observe trends at times, but there is nothing official, and it is not a function of the contractor's license to document that.
Right, so, it, that falls back to, it's the homeowner's responsibility to pull the proper permit and to, you know, adhere to the zoning code and ask for relief from the code when it's appropriate. It's not on the contractors. So, the contractor can do something...
The contractor should bear some responsibility, don't you think?
I agree, but that there's no, that's not the way that it works. So, the homeowner has to make sure the contractor is doing the right job. So, going back to where I sit on this, I'm with Reinhardt, that there should be something that falls to the homeowner, if they want to take it up with their contractor later, that's up to them, as far as not following permitting properly. If they ask for a permit, that they need to follow the plans in the permit, not go outside the scope of those plans to make it better, or more convenient, or whatever. But I don't know that the board will do that.
I want to just point out, I guess, two other things.
Yeah.
One is, you know, not condoning lack of permits, but it's been there for five years, and there have been no complaints about it as a visual or noise problem, which I think says something. And as far as the pergola goes, they could run a six-foot stockade fence along there, it wouldn't be as high as the pergola is, but that would be a more daunting thing than having a couple of eight-foot-high poles.
So, the pergola, you know, I hadn't gotten to that in my comments, but my thought on the pergola is, well, if, if we're allowing the grill to stay, the pergola is there for the grill, not if you set it three feet, you know, outside the sideyard setback, well, then its purpose is not being served, it's, it's to cover the grill.
But it's not, it just opens slats, so it's really not providing anything except for an aesthetic for the grill.
Yeah, it's architectural...
Right, there's no, there's not a shelter.
But the problem with that is, our code calls, you know, space under a pergola a, it's square footage of, that contributes to the FAR, isn't it? And it's also a permanent structure, so to have that permanent structure in the sideyard setback, where's the hardship? There is no hardship for it, you know, so if we're...
I have a bright yellow umbrella on my, on my Weber grill, which I pull up whenever it rains, and it works fine, and it's more obtrusive than this pergola is. Nobody else complains.
But we are here to enforce our code when we can.
So, but what I...
Or apply our code to the application.
We should stop by your house and see if there are any other violations.
Field trip.
Do you want to keep talking?
Yeah. Have you done any other work in your house without a permit?
I, I have some issue about, about the, the concept of how we classify pergolas to begin with. I mean, I don't, it's really just a visual element, as you say, it doesn't provide shade, it doesn't provide protection from the rain, like my umbrella does. And a bright red umbrella, nine feet in diameter, ten feet high, would be as obtrus, much more obtrusive than a, than a vine-covered pergola, wouldn't it?
But the pergla, yeah, I, I agree, but the pergola, under our code, I got it, I got it, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, so, yeah. So, I, that's, so I stand, I guess, I'm going to, I, my opinion is, I'm going to be voting against this, because you can't satisfy everything, I mean, I can be okay with the air conditioner, but I can't be okay with some of the other aspects of the application. And leave it to the board to, you know, have a supermajority to overturn our decision if it goes negative, and I would love, because I, I would like the board to, you know, be able to do something for people that don't go through the permitting process, or don't follow the permits that they request.
And for the, for the applicant and the neighbor, we're just an advisory board, you know, these are decisions that the board needs, you know, the elected officials need to make to resolve these issues in the future.
Our role is to interpret the zoning code and apply it to applications, and we try and do our best, we try and find gray areas for people, because we understand that, hey, we all live together in this community, and we want to make where we live better. Sometimes, we don't see a gray area, and, you know, we have to vote against something, but it is ultimately, as Mr. Sermon pointed out, is ultimately to the Village Board's decision as to how things turn out.
Has not the board, many times, whether or not we voted in favor of something or against something, they, they have imposed conditions, sanctions, consequences on, on the, they have not forced them to undo this, they're unlikely to force them to undo this, right?
I think that's realistic.
They may impose some kind of penalty on the contractor, or, and they have done that before, so what is, let me just understand, if we vote against this, they will have to overrule this.
Supermajority.
Supermajority, and impose, and impose whatever penalty they want.
They don't have to impose a penalty, but it's up to them, and they will read the notes that we're asking, or mentioning.
If we say then, can we give an, approve it, subject to asking the board to impose some consequences, some sanctions?
What's the hardship?
Yeah, I think we have to go back to what the, our interpretation, our personal interpretation of the code is.
Yeah, I don't think we can require them to do...
There's nothing in zoning code that says that. So, I, I don't know, Lisa, you, you want to answer his question more directly than...
Sure, I mean, procedurally, someone could make a motion, and you could vote on adding that motion to, you know, recommend a penalty or permit surcharge, or whatever it might be for it. I, I'm not sure how much direction that they would need or want, but you can offer it up.
Well, in any case, it's on the record, right? It'll be in the minutes, our view, okay.
Yeah, that's an interesting comment, a permit surcharge.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, there's nothing, like, so, someone...
In the city of Chicago, they have that, if you start work without a permit, you'll pay a fee.
An additional fee on top of what the permit...
It's usually double permit fees or something like that.
We do have something like that. It is unusual to implement it for work that's five years old, but yes, we do have a permit surcharge that we...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just asking in the...
Oh, yeah, we regularly charge surcharges, yeah.
Because people have started work and then stopped, okay.
Yeah.
All right, good to know.
Can I make one more comment?
Absolutely, feel free.
Before we hopefully go to a vote? It's often stated that, you know, it's better if the lines are close and short, you know, it's not uncommon to have very long runs on these air conditioning systems, they're frequently placed on roofs of buildings.
Yeah.
Going down multiple floors, including in many buildings in Wellmet, so it's, there's not much of a technical limitation unless you get into excessive lengths.
I think, yeah, over seventy-five feet is usually...
Right, so, I mean, that doesn't, it shouldn't really be an issue as we look at these moving forward.
Yeah, you insulate the refrigeration line, and it's typically fine.
So, so then, this is absolute convenience kind of move, get it out of the backyard so that we have more backyard, or we have more freedom along the back of the house.
Unless noise, yeah.
It's less noise when you're sitting back there, and potentially more noise for the neighbor. I'd love to move mine to the side of my house, so I don't have to hear it when I'm sitting in my backyard.
Come in front of us, and we'll approve it.
Yeah, I was going to say, come to the board here, well...
Can you get me on the...
You beat me to it, Mr. Coling. All right, any other comments before I close this, and we take a vote?
No, all right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Boyer?
No.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Robkey?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes no as well. So, that's going to go as a negative recommendation to the Village Board. The Village Board's meeting is on, I lost my page, whether, February thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
All right, February thirteenth. You can come up and ask us questions in one second. You obviously are going to want to attend that meeting on the thirteenth. It's going to be a case that they're going to discuss, and so they will ask you questions about it, and they have the opportunity to overturn this negative recommendation, make it a positive, in that they're going to say, yes, you can do what you, keep what you have and continue with the pergola, they may make an alteration to it and say, keep what you have, but don't do the pergola, you know, it could be any number of things, but they will discuss it with you, and you guys can work it out at that point. They will then vote after they've reached an agreement with you to probably approve whatever you discuss with them. Is that about right?
Yeah.
All right. What, you want to make a recommendation?
Well, I was going to make just one suggestion, your color copies, if you put them up here so you can reuse them.
All right, and then, I will need one of you to come up and sign this letter, which is acknowledging some dates and your presence.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2018-C-02.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, December sixth, 2017.
All in favor?
Oh, just one.
I got a second from somebody.
Take that one, it's all right.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, December twentieth, 2017.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boyer, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to open the, the microphone for public comments right now, if anybody would like to make an announcement about an event, or, we're going to go to Mr. Schneider's house and look for more code violations. All right, I will now adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. I hope I didn't get me a...